Hey everybody, how's it going? We are live. Oh, the Ben Jorowski Show for Tuesday. June 8th is just moments away. Our guest looks like he's in a NASCAR pit crew or something.
He's doing all kinds of things. Acrobatic stuff with a microphone. Whoa, that's X rated, man.
Good God. As our guest gets prepared.
Must hurt.
And his mic stand went limp. Am I right? That's what just happened. All right, your Ben Jorowski Show for Tuesday, June 8th is just moments away. But before we do this, we need to thank our sponsors. Sponsors like SEIU Healthcare, Illinois, Indiana, the Chicago Federation of Labor sponsors, as well as the Chicago Reader. ChicagoReader.com for all things there is to know the city of Chicago. Where to go, what to do, what to eat, what to drink, what to smoke, and so much more, including columns from our very own Ben Jorowski and our colleague Maya Duke Masova. It's Chicago Reader, ChicagoReader.com. Subscribe. And if you want to help out this program, ChicagoReader.com/Jorowski, J-O-R-A-V-E as in victory, S-K-Y. You can become a Ben Head. You can either be in the alley, the avenue, or the boulevard. Find out more information, ChicagoReader.com/Jorowski. And the Benny J Show starts now. It is Tuesday, June 8th. And live from my apartment and his attic, this is the Ben Jorowski Show. Today on the program, it's a city council meeting in review with our good friend Dave Glowatz. And now your host, Chicago Reader columnist Ben Jorowski.
Hello, everybody. Ben Jorowski here. We're calling this fake news Tuesday. And here's why. Great weekend. You have a good weekend, Dee?
Yes, I did. Very good weekend.
Heard it from a friend who heard it from a friend that you went down to A-Town.
Yes.
Which is what the hipsters call Alton.
Went to Downstate, Downstate Alton. They're done with the masks. They're like, ah.
Wait, done with the masks implies that they were ever doing the masks?
They were. They were at one point.
I'm now going to quote you what that Altonian said to you at a gas station back in. Off pussy.
I mean, that did happen.
Because Dennis was wearing a mask. They're done with the masks. So, so, okay. There you go, Walton. Like, half of them were wearing a mask at all. Anyway, I'm glad you had a good time in Alton. I spent the weekend watching basketball, so much basketball, the games fade together. I'm starting to get visions of old Bulls games with Jordan coming down and scoring. I withdraw all symptoms, folks, for a Bulls team that hasn't won since 1998. My house filled with millennials. My daughters are in town. They're bringing their friends. Of course, their friends bring other friends. Everybody's sitting in the living room while I'm watching basketball. Anyway, I woke up to realize there was a huge controversy brewing that demanded my attention. Was Donald Trump wearing his pants backwards? My favorite story of the weekend, right up there with the Floyd Marywares exhibition fight against Logan Paul, which is the biggest joke of the year. So I won't waste your time on it, just to tell you that I spent a lot of time following that fight. Mm-hmm. Anyway, back to Trump, his pants. It started with Trump's speech to the faithful North Carolina, where he did his usual litney, Democrats weak on crime, borders under siege. He really won. He's hoping to win the recount in Arizona and then the one in Georgia. And if all goes well, he'll be back in August, come, back in office come August. Yes, that's his plan. He actually thinks or seems to believe that he'll be back in office in August. Office as in the White House as being our president. So he gives his speech. And while it's going on, the internet is aflame. Those flames shooting off from the internet.
I was wondering what that was.
By the way, I'm just watching my, our first guest. He is so hard at work. Good God, he's the hardest working man in show business.
Oh, man, look at him going to town. Did he just change a tire?
Anyway, where was I? By the way, speaking of tires, I just have to say this. I've noticed this, Dee, that bike stores are no longer having the old automatic air tire filler that, you know, the hoses that you just push. Now they have the hand pumps. Have you noticed that?
Yep.
Although, come on, bike stores, get your act together. This hand pump's stuck.
Came out of nowhere.
Well, I saw Mr. Bike and I just thought of, whatever. Sorry. Anyway. Back to Donald Trump's speech over the weekend in North Carolina. The internet was aflame with tweets. His pants are backwards. It's so aflamed, it got to me. You know, it's a hot thing. If I find it, someone sent it to me. Send me a picture of Donald Trump. Yeah, and I looked at that picture and folks, I'm telling you right now, his pants were on backwards. I can't see the zipper. So I asked my wife. She couldn't see the zipper either. So then we passed the picture around all the millennials in the room. They couldn't see the zipper either. I get out the magnifying glass. No zipper. And you're like, I know what you're saying, listeners. You're like, oh, Ben, come on, that is so beneath you. This is so indign- undignified. I want deeper analysis about spending policies in the city of Chicago and state of Illinois. To which I say, you can't have it both ways, people. I've been doing a deep dive of a really serious budget issue for years. Many times having conversations with my next guest, Dave Glowatz. All kinds of complicated municipal financing schemes. And the collective reaction to the city of Chicago is when are you going to get over that, Ben? So forget that. I want to talk about Donald's pants. Yes. He was wearing them backwards. Yes, MAGA, come face to face with the fact that you have sworn allegiance to a guy who's lost his mind. You don't even know what's, which is the right and which is the wrong side of the pants. Meanwhile, the mainstream media, I'll tell you what, you know how aflame it was on the internet, Dee? The mainstream media found their way to it. Well, I don't think we can ignore this anymore. This is a board meeting at the New York Times and NPR and the Chicago Tribune. We must address this issue. Was Donald Trump wearing his pants backwards? All over the internet, we must address this issue. So they sent out their best investigative reporters. We're not talking about the C squad, like at the Ben Jorowski Show. We're talking about
Hey.
Young millennials who know how to use computers from the New York Times, the Washington Post, and CNN. They're all studying his trousers. And they're like, hmm. So beneath us. I did not go to journalism school to be looking at Donald Trump's trousers. And they come to the conclusion that he was wearing his pants on right. They came to the conclusion. Donald Trump has been hammering the mainstream media for years, using them as his whipping boy. When push comes to shove, they're fair. They're like, when he goes low, we go high. When does that ever work? Ever. Anyway, two wrongs don't make a right, Ben. So they come to the conclusion that his pants were on right. Well, how do you pronounce that outfit? Snopes, snoops, whatever it's called?
It's snoops.
Okay.
No, it's noobs. I'm just joking.
In other words, you don't know. It's 50/50.
No, it's snopes.
Oh, it's noobs?
For sure, it's snopes.
Mr. Bike, our next guest is like, oh my God. Everybody knows it's snopes. Anyway, snopes is like, they're so disdainful of the discussion. They have the, of course, his pants were on right. It's beneath them. You know, I went to journalism school and our purpose was not to discuss whether Donald Trump's pants were on backwards. I am a journalist, respect me. But you know something, folks? I've learned from Donald Trump. Donald Trump went far in the world by denying what everybody saw right in front of their face. For instance, last November's presidential election, Joe Biden was the victor. Everybody knows that. He won by over, I don't know, eight million votes. Every Republican official in the United States certified the election. That stopped Donald Trump? No. He insists that he won, even though he lost. And what's worse, he's got legislators all over the country, Republican legislators all over the country, changing election laws to repair the non-existent flaws in the system that led him to lose, even though he didn't lose. We're going to have Jason Lee coming on Wednesday to talk about what they're doing in Texas. They've lost their mind. We've had Darryl Jones and Barbara Arnoy talking about Georgia, other states too. They're seriously trying to set up a situation in 2022 and 2024 where Donald Trump can have his flunkies on various legislators and, I don't know, election boards throughout the country, throw out votes for Democrats to guarantee Republican wins. Because it's really hard to lose an election when you have the authority just to randomly throw out the votes of your opponent based on non-existent, non-real, made up claims of cheating. This is going on right now, my friends, in the name of cleaning up a fraud that was non-existent. As in, it didn't exist. As in, Donald Trump made it up. Like, could you imagine? Like, he started making up he had a special friend. This is my special friend election fraud. Nobody can see him, Donald. I, I see him. He's wearing a red shirt. So forget that go high when he goes low. If Donny can do it, so can I. Hey, MAGA, I'm going to break some news to you. Your leader, the guy you swear allegiance to, he's so batshit loony. He puts his pants on backwards and he doesn't know the difference between the front and the back of his pants. I could see it right there in the picture. What's that you say, MAGA? In your response, the USA Today and Washington Post and Snopes said the pants are on right? Oh, yes. Well, to quote your favorite leader, Donald Trump, fake news. Goes around, comes around, MAGA. We got a great show today, everybody. No fake news in this show.
I'm not a doctor.
He's working so hard. He's got all his clips together from the city council meeting from a little while ago. You're going to hear our favorite part of the Ben Jorowski Show where Dave says, Dennis, play the Jason Urban clip. And Dennis is like, God, dip. This is how you host a show. He pushes the button and you hear exactly what Dave Glowatz wants you to hear.
I mean, you're not wrong.
How you do a show.
You're not wrong.
Of course, I'm not wrong. I'm right. I'm right about those pants, too. They were on backwards. Donald like, oops. Oh, God, I hate when that happens. So anyway, Dave Glowatz will be joining us. Steve, I'm going to leave it up to you. Should we take a brief break before we bring young Dave on? Or should we bring him on right now? Your call.
How's Dave feeling? How's Dave doing?
Uh, he put his thumb up. Is his mic working?
Let's go.
He put his, let's go live. Ladies and gentlemen, without further ado, the man, the myth, the legend, the pride and joy of Weber High, Dave Glowatz. Welcome back to the show, young man.
It's really great to be here. Thank you both for having me.
And you did go to Weber High, right? For a moment, I panicked and thought it was Fenwick.
Well, yeah, it's true. I did go to Weber, which no longer exists, even though the building is still a school. And can you name that school?
It's Chicago Junior High. It's a middle school.
It is a middle school. It is a Chicago public school. Yeah. There's still, uh, still religious Arcania inscribed on the facade. They couldn't quite do away with that. But, uh, you know, it's a nice little campus.
It's a junior high. I remember it's a junior high.
I think it's a middle school.
Well, in the suburbs, we call them junior highs.
Well, that is a little bit of Chicago education trivia, right? We don't have, uh, we usually have K through eight in Chicago. And, uh, middle schools are kind of a suburban thing. So it's interesting that it is a middle school and not a K through eight grade school.
Well, it's on the far northwest side of the city of Chicago.
It's not that far. It's Fullerton.
But how far west?
Laramie.
Laramie, okay. All right, look, Dee, can we just edit that out and go, it's, uh, on the northwest side of the city of Chicago?
All of that will be out.
Yeah, take out the far. Just go like, it's on the northwest side of the city of Chicago. Anyway, um, yeah, back in those days, the neighborhood when they converted it was overcrowded with schools. And I think school enrollment is falling. But let's move on to other things. Dave Glowatz has a whole series of clips from the last city council meeting. And true to form, he's not shared them with me. I just know the general name. I called them before, for pre-show planning meeting, Dee. And he gave me the, the names, but it was awful, awfully invasive. Because he wants this to be totally improv. No preparation whatsoever.
What you inferred as invasive is actually my poor memory. Just saying.
Short-term memories, the first to go, young man. First to go. All right, take it away, young man.
Second thing, it's the second thing to go.
Hmm, I want to think about what that, the first thing would be.
I can't remember.
Oh, by the way, I, that just is, before we get started, I got to give a shout out to Rex Hupkey, the columnist for the Chicago Tribune. This dude is funny. And, uh, this, you'll see the connection, Dave, uh, when I tell you this. He had a column in today's Tribune, I turned 50 and AARP started sending me mail. I had to get to the bottom of this. It was a very funny column. The guy turned 50, uh, and that's a shock. I remember when it happened to me, Rex, when I turned 50, all of a sudden I'm getting letters from AARP. That's the Association for Retired People. Uh, and, um, so when you start getting those like, I'm not old. I'm still young. No. Anyway, very funny column. Uh, I'll just read you one paragraph, Rex Hupkey quote, "I believe in aging gracefully, and that's why I stood up for my third AARP letter-induced fainting spell and screamed, 'I am not old and I do not want to read about anti-inflammatory foods and and play online solitaire because I am young and hip and fun.'" It's all in big bold letters. Anyway, Rex Hupkey, great job. Sorry, Dave, I just had to say that. Go ahead, the floor is yours.
He's just a baby, though, isn't he?
Yes, compared to me and you, he's just a baby. But to Dennis, he's an old man.
It's all relative.
That's what my uncle used to tell me.
On that note, I'll say, Ben, that the full Chicago City Council met on May 26, 2021, in person for the second time since the start of the pandemic.
Did you attend the meeting in person?
I did not.
Just wanted to.
I was off that day. A little over three quarters of the city council members were present, though. And the meeting lasted for about four hours, 45 minutes of which was taken up by Alderman heaping praise on the retiring commissioner of the Department of Water Management. Do you know his name?
Um, yes. His name is Jimi Hendrix.
Uh, you have the syllables right.
Oh, really?
Two for the first name and two in the last name. Yeah. His first name is Randy and his last name is Connor.
Oh. Oh, my God, Randy Connor. And wait, I didn't have any syllables right.
You know, Jimi Hendrix, there's two syllables and Jimmy and two syllables.
Oh, I see.
I meant the number of syllables, sorry.
I see. Yeah, he's been around for a long time. I've never met him. I've just seen his name in the newspaper.
Yeah, he got, he got a lot of, uh, praise poured on him, as it were.
Oh. Dave will be, uh, period, Zany's next week.
There was, there was no mention of the continuing problems with the, uh, water in the Roseland neighborhood, though. So no one talked about that. Dennis, please, we'll do asphalt first. So, all right, uh, let's, let me, let me continue to quiz you, if I may, Ben, with some, uh, city, uh, personality trivia. What do you know about the Tatum family? T-A-D.
Oh, the Tadens? From the South Side, paving company, well-connected family from the Bridgeport area, always getting city contracts. The Tribune and the Sun-Times wrote many, many articles about them. I want to say, young Dave, in the 90s and the 00s, when Daley was, uh, Richard M. Daley was in charge. It was a Michael Tatum, Billy Bob Tatum.
Zachary.
Zachary, Jimmy Hendrix Tatum. Uh, no, the Tatum family, one of those really connected Chicago families that Chicago journalists feel obligated to write about from time to time. I must write about the Tadens. I've not written about them in a while.
Well, what we're going to talk about first has a connection. Uh, we're going to talk about during the city council meeting, there was a report from the zoning committee about a proposed rezoning of a, um, building at 21, 2139 West Pershing Road. It'd be reclassifying the zoning. This development would have over 100 affordable housing units. But it's next to a manufacturing facility operated by a company called Mat Asphalt, M-A-T Asphalt, owned by the Tatum family. And for those keeping score, this, uh, the ordinance that would do the rezoning in this is SO 2019 hyphen 2789. The clip we're going to listen to starts with zoning committee chair Alderman Tom Tony of the 44th Ward. Let's listen.
Document number 020192789 for the property commonly known as 2139 and 2159 West Pershing Road. This is the adaptive reuse of the warehouse next to McKinley Park.
There's been a call for a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Lasfara.
The chair recognizes Alderman Ramires.
We're voting, uh, yes or no?
If you're voting yes, you're voting in the affirmative recommendation from the zoning committee for the zoning change appropriate to this property in Alderman Cardenas' ward.
Alderman Siblaski Garza.
I would like to defer to my colleague Alderman Cardenas. It's in his ward.
Chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
This is a great reuse of property that's been abandoned for decades upon decades. To vote against it would mean that we negate affordable housing and other types of housing development for McKinley Park. What are we talking about? What, what are we doing here? We claim and we scream that, that we need housing, affordable housing. That's what this does. It repurposes buildings that are strong, that were built many generations ago.
The chair recognizes Alderman Soria.
The last thing that I want to do is vote against a colleague regarding a project in his ward. But at this time, I would like to ask that this matter be deferred and published until such a time that we can get some additional environmental concerns answered. I think that was the gist of the objections that were raised yesterday.
There's a, I believe by Sixo Lopez. We only need two. Thank you, Alderman Vazquez. Sir, we're going to have order here, okay? We're not going to call out, this item is deferred and published. The chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
As a point of order, I, I thought we had an open roll call before defer and publish was called. Therefore, you can't call for a defer and publish during a roll call, if I, if I'm correct. Is that true, parliamentarian?
On confirming with the parliamentarian, Alderman Riley is correct. There was a pending roll call vote. I direct the clerk to call the roll. Last question, Alderman Spazada.
So I'm on the plan commission and I'm embarrassed to say the beating that man took from the plan commission. They called him names without calling him names. I know he worked hard on this. The bottom line is, folks, if people don't want to live in a $2,000 apartment for $1,000 a month, or whatever it is, they don't have to live there.
The chair recognizes Alderman Hadden.
Our own Department of Housing denied funding to this project because of environmental concerns. We need to make better decisions. Our decisions have an impact for decades. Our city and our predecessors have made decisions that have put low-income people in environmentally dangerous situations. We are currently under investigation for environmental racism for past practices. It would be very unwise for you to support without further environmental review, passing this project.
The chair recognizes Alderman Vazquez.
I just wanted to correct the public record, although you tempted to admonish me. It was my colleague Alderman Rosa. I know we're both socialist and Latinx, but we're not the same person. Thank you.
I thought it was you because you were making gestures like you were talking.
I'll let you know.
Stand corrected and don't appreciate the, uh, snarky comments, or particularly not as a woman of color. Chair recognizes Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
So has a system of aldermanic prerogative where we turn to our local colleagues and say, you tell us what you think is best for your ward. Generally, I would say I want to support my colleague on this zoning change. He has determined that this is the best land use and zoning policy for that parcel in his community. But we also know that there's Neighbors for Environmental Justice, an organization that was formed specifically to oppose the environmental racism that has existed on the southwest side for entirely too long and to speak out against the Matt Asphalt Plant being right next to a park, right next to a school, right next to people's homes. Poor people, working class people, they often don't have a choice as to where they get to live in the city. And that choice is shrinking day after day after day as affordable two and four flats are torn down in communities. So we have to be very intentional and very serious about how we promote affordable housing in this city. And it is a travesty that in this moment, we're considering putting 120 affordable apartments that we're going to say, you know what? That's where you get to go. You get to go right next to an asphalt plant. Don't you love it? Aren't you so happy? Here's your affordable option in the city of Chicago. Breathe in the fumes.
Wow. Breathe in the fumes. Just as a little parliamentary detail there, Ben, Alderman Rod Sear of the 6th Ward attempted to make a motion for something called defer and publish, which is something that when an alderman presents it, if he can, he or she can team up with another alderman, they can delay consideration of whatever is currently being considered till the next council meeting. But we heard why that didn't fly. And I'll say that, uh, finally, that this motion passed 36 to 13.
And, uh, by the way, I thoroughly enjoyed that on many fronts. I was not aware of that one, somehow or other, that debate, because the part of, the recounting of the story that I read of that city council meeting put the heavy emphasis on the, the, I can't even say with a straight face. Lori Lightfoot admonishing, uh, Alderman Vazquez not to make snarky comments. I don't appreciate that stuff. Oh, you're the only one who gets to make snarky comments.
Yeah, it was hardly, it was like all of three seconds there.
I know, but that's the one that I remember. You know, it's like, that's what I retained.
Well, that's what was reported.
Yes. But I also, uh, it was just sort of stuck in my head there. I thought it was pretty funny. I mean, come on, when they, when you make a mistake, you make a mistake. You got to acknowledge it and go on. Uh, so Dave, you know, we used to play this game, uh, from time to time. Watch this ducking and dodging. It's about to occur, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, so Dave Glowatz, if you were an alderman in the Chicago City Council and you had, you were confronted with this vote, do you approve this deal, which would, uh, put affordable housing, which the city desperately needs, but put it next to, uh, an asphalt plant where there's environmental concerns about the impact of that asphalt plant on the people who live in that affordable housing? Would you vote yes to create the affordable housing that the city desperately needs? Or would you vote no to protect the people from any potential environmental harm from the plant? Dave Glowatz, no ducking and dodging, go.
What do you mean no ducking or dodging? What do you mean? What kind of rule is that?
Already the ducking and dodging. Can we defer and publish, uh, on that question until the next show?
Look, I wasn't involved in any of the hearings that led up to this. That there, as we heard Alderman Cardenas say, um, that there was, well, actually, we didn't hear in this clip, but he did say at the beginning of his comments that there was significant review of this, uh, project by the plan commission, by the zoning committee. We heard Alderman Spazado say that he was, uh, that Alderman, um, uh, I'm sorry, I'm blanking out, uh, that Alderman Cardenas was raked over the coals. What did Spazado say? They called him names without calling him names. So, um, if, if I was to make an informed vote, I would want to have been around for all of that. Plus, I'm interested in what, um, what the environmental groups have shown in terms of the existing, because they're existing. Uh, there's a school, there's existing housing, there's existing retail. I'd want to know the data. You know, what is, what is the, uh, you know, the actual, uh, objection, uh, what's word, objective? Uh, how am I, how am I dodging?
Yeah, you're, you're, you're ducking and dodging, but I'm, um, but you're actually raising all the relevant points.
Objective data.
Yeah, objective data. So you want to, an informed, uh, a vote. So you don't want to just say, well, the local alderman's for it, so therefore I'm automatically for it because I believe in automated prerogative. You know, we've discussed automated prerogative much, many, many times on this show. Uh, and, uh, I'm in favor of automated prerogative, uh, as a concept. In other words, I would put, uh, the, uh, the concerns of a local alderman ahead of some unseen, unknown bureaucrat in city hall, uh, on a matter like this. At the same time, I mean, uh, I don't know, putting all that housing next to an asphalt plant? I would, I, I've not seen the environmental reports without having seen the reports. And I'm always skeptical about the city of Chicago. We've talked at great length about what's going on on the far southeast side of Chicago where they cut that deal with General Iron. So folks who don't live in Chicago need to understand something. Uh, so often is the case in the city of Chicago, deals are made and all the evidence is kind of behind closed doors. And if you want to see the evidence, you have to file Freedom of Information Act requests. And if you want to see the evidence, you have to file Freedom of Information Act requests and you may see their evidence. It may be redacted. On the other hand, they may resist you. Chicago does not have a good track record of being open and honest about how it oversees development deals. That is for certain. They're definitely not honest about the subsidy end of it, whether it needs to be subsidized. So I would have tremendous reservations, Dave, about voting for this, even with the local alderman's support. But if I voted against these local aldermen, they'd hold that against me, wouldn't they? They go, oh, look who wants his zoning approved further down the road. If I was to say, somebody would remember that I voted no against George Cardenas.
So you're saying there would be, there would be retribution?
Yes, absolutely. There would be retribution and they would make fun of you. At least don't always make fun of Carlos, you know, make, oh, Mr. Environmental. That was kind of a Richard Mel thing. I hope you have some Richard Mel quotes from this meeting, but whatever. That was kind of a Richard Mel thing from back in the day. Richard Mel would get up and mock and taunt the independents, the people who dared to go against Mayor Daley or Mayor Rahm, mostly Mayor Daley. So for instance, they would, the, the independents would be talking about the parking meter, meter deal, let's say, and how the numbers don't add up and Mel would get up, oh, like you read it, you haven't read it, you don't know. Give me a break, you know, oh, I read it. And he would like pretend he was reading it.
You want to talk about snark?
Yes. Thank you. Great history. It's come on Mayor Lightfoot. Now I just, you know, you kind of rolled with the punch a little bit there, you know? I mean, Vasquez got a good joke in. You made a mistake. You called the wrong alder. It's not the end of the world.
Setting aside this tit for tat stuff, there is another dynamic at work here that I want to point out. This site at the, this housing site is on the edge of what was formerly planned manufacturing district. And as you probably know, Ben, planned manufacturing districts, as districts, as the name implies, were places set aside in the city for manufacturing to take place. It wouldn't come in conflict with non-manufacturing site uses like housing and retail. So, you know, because manufacturing has its own sort of, you know, noise and smells, et cetera. Well, what's, what's happened over the last couple of decades is Chicago has, as manufacturing has left the city or gone to other parts of the region, that the city has kind of rethought its PMD strategy. And it is taking forward planned manufacturing districts and carving them up into places like housing. Lincoln Yards is on the north side is a perfect example. So what's increasingly happening is these developments are ending up right on the edge of, you know, where there used to be a place that was set aside for manufacturing.
Yeah, that's a very good point. So if we, moving beyond this particular debate, if the city continues to develop the way it has been developing, things have been stalled because of the pandemic. But if the upscale gentrification continues to move further south and west from the loop, as it's been happening, pretty soon McKinley Park will become, this is the area where Cardenas represents, will gentrify. If, if, if the pattern continues, we don't know if it will, but if the pattern continues, and then the new residents will object to any existing manufacturing facilities, much like what has happened on the north side of Chicago around Lincoln Yards. And so this is ongoing transformation of neighborhoods. And then this struggle with the city, like, well, we want to keep good paying manufacturing jobs in Chicago. Where do we put them? And so the neighbor, the city of Chicago has generally has this, like designate certain neighborhoods, you know, where they can put them, like the southeast side. We talked about.
Lake Calumet?
Yes, the southeast side, Lake Calumet. And so maybe one day that area will start gentrifying and there'll be resistance. But this is an ongoing pattern. This has been happening, folks, since the seventies. And this is the, this is sort of the backdrop of that debate. And I don't know, Dave, if there'll ever be a sort of reconciliation on this one. I think the, the reality is that the city's unstated economic development plan, they never come right out and admit this, is to fuel the gentrification of Chicago as much as possible. And as much as possible, move poor people out of Chicago. And if that means turning areas that had been manufactured into residential, that's what we got to do. I, I, that, I've never seen anything to counter that theory that I have.
Chris Kennedy would agree with you.
Yes, Chris Kennedy, in a moment of truth, in a moment of truth, Chris Kennedy, who was running for governor in 2018, said that the planning strategy of Mayor Rahm is to move black, he said, he, he made it very specific, black people. But I think it's beyond black people, just poor people in general, many of whom are black in the city of Chicago. He spoke the truth. He was immediately condemned by absolutely everybody who's considered like prominent in the city of Chicago. Corporate leaders, civic leaders, editorial board. He spoke the truth and in Chicago he was condemned. Shut up. He retreated. Haven't heard from Chris Kennedy in a while. So yes, this is the, the drama going on. But I got to admit, I had a smile, huge smile. And Brendan Riley, he's like the, was it Brendan Riley you said, who was the 42nd Ward Alderman who got up and?
So this is, this is not, this is not right.
No, no, defer and publish cannot happen after you've called a roll call vote. And like, good damn, Brendan Riley. Yeah. So yeah, who called for defer publish Rod Sawyer? Yeah, it was Rod Sawyer.
It was Rod Sawyer.
And Brendan Riley though, uh-uh, can't do, no, no, he's like the, the Kembematumbo waving his finger in here. Anyway, so good stuff. Yeah. And it passed.
36 to 13.
Yeah. And folks, before you go, well, Ben, they passed because of alderman prerogative. If, if this, nah, it's not so, I don't know if it's as true with Lori Lightfoot, we'll be exploring this later. But if the old rules had followed, had played out, they would have voted no if Mayor Lori Lightfoot was against it. Just saying, you know, when there's been in the past, a conflict between what the local alderman does, wants, and what the mayor wants, the mayor has prevailed, as we saw with Rahm Emanuel and Brendan Riley, with a zoning dispute downtown Chicago, Nick Spazato and Alderman and Mayor Emanuel with the charter school on Northwest Side. But I don't know, Dave, I have a feeling that things are kind of changing in Chicago in the city council on these disputes between the mayor and the alderman. And the aldermen are much more willing to vote against the mayor than they have in the past.
Well, continuing on this theme of economic disparity, Dennis, please, we'll do dope next. There is another conflict that arose during a report by the city council's zoning committee. And an ordinance that came up in the zoning committee report is one that would allow the expansion of a cannabis dispensary on Milwaukee Avenue near Lawrence on the north side in the 45th Ward of Alderman James Gardner. And for those keeping score, that's record number 02021 hyphen 445. You might recall, Ben, this came up in the April city council meeting as well. And at that meeting, the council voted to hold this rezoning in committee, in the zoning committee till May. And now we're going to hear what happened at the May committee. And it starts with, this clip starts with the zoning committee chair, Alderman Tom Tunnie. Let's listen.
This is the item in the 45th Ward, recreational dispensary, and I call for a roll call.
We got a point of order here. Are we going to have debate or are we just moving into a roll call?
He asked for a roll call. So I think we've got to proceed with the roll call.
Well, here's a question then, if, if this is going to be the way we conduct business, then we'll not have the opportunity for debate. I'll ask the chairman to draw his motion until debate is concluded on the matter.
So procedurally, a member calls for a roll call. I then, as the chair, ask the clerk to read the roll. When I ask for the clerk to read the roll, that's the end. The roll call should go forward. If you want to debate, the time between, and I typically scan the room to look, is the time to say something. We will allow discussion and debate, but going forward, once I ask the clerk to call the roll, then we're done. We're doing the roll. All right?
Respectfully disagree with that. We'll move forward. We talk about this prerogative. It seems like when it comes down to black folks, automatic prerogative is tossed out the window. Because I can recall this very body here, when the alderman in the second ward wanted to put honorary street sign up for a slain civil rights leader in their ward, oh, we can't do that. Why? Because it, it goes beyond automatic prerogative. And Alderman Mitz in the 37th Ward tried to bring jobs to her community. We had to sit here and fight for almost a year to bring jobs, which was a war matter, but no, that's, that's, that's not automatic prerogative. We talk about this cannabis. I know that the alderman in the 45th Ward has been lobbying, saying, hey, this is my ward, this is my thing. But at what cost? Here we are sitting in Springfield and we've been talking to our representatives in Springfield. House passed a bill that would increase cannabis across our city and across the state to bring in what we fought for. Because I would like to vote in support of the matter that is proposed, to respect the wishes of the alderman, but also do something that's positive for all of us. The question is, can you wait for equity? Can we wait so that everybody can participate? I would just ask the alderman of the 45th Ward to hold this matter. Because if it passes the senate and is signed by the governor, we all can walk down the street together on this issue. This vote today is a matter of greed, period, paragraph. And if the alderman of the 45th Ward wants to continue to move forward in this manner, I think is wrong. It's his prerogative to do so. But again, this is a slap in the face to a lot of people, especially when we see that this matter can easily be dealt with in the next couple of days.
The chair recognizes Alderman Taylor.
At the end of the day, nothing in this city should move until the people who are actually locked up and mistreated and died of brown marijuana are taken care of, nothing should move. Alderman Gardner, this is no disrespect to you, but that's the problem in this city council. We'll always say it's okay to move it, but we will. No, until we all get it, nobody gets it.
The chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
I understand what my colleague Alderman Irvin is fighting for. I agree with him. There needs to be more equity in this industry. I do not argue that. Nor do I argue the fact that they're going to bring nearly $2.4 million tax revenue to a city whose caucus, the majority of which voted to raise property taxes just last November. And probably we're going to have another vote this November to raise property taxes once again. So my colleague Alderman Irvin asked, at what cost? That's a great question. At what cost and to who? We have a business that's willing and able to pay those taxes happily.
Chair recognizes Alderman Tunnie.
This is a February thing that we put off for three months. We've had very robust discussions from the beginning of the cannabis ordinance about the inequities. They were under the control, more so with the state legislature than it was with us. And many of you know, if we wait for the state legislature to get things done, we will be paralyzed as a city.
One detail I want to point out there, Alderman Irvin mentioned, who's also the, his 20th Ward Alderman and the Black Caucus Chair. He made reference to a bill passed by the Illinois House. This was legislation that was not completely passed, was not yet passed by the Illinois senate at the time of the city council meeting. And that legislation would provide a means for awarding of cannabis dispensary licenses to so-called equity applicants, namely people of color and people prosecuted for cannabis crimes. But since that, this May city council meeting, we're talking about, the general assembly did pass that legislation. So what was arguing for, like, hold on, we could just hold on and, you know, if that, that stuff gets passed, then, then I'm, then I'm green lighting this.
Yeah. That was fascinating. Good job, Dave. And Jason Irvin is the alderman of the 28th Ward on the west side of Chicago. Jeanette Taylor was also in there, quoted there, JT, a big friend of the show from the 20th Ward. I'm with Jeanette Taylor and Alderman Irvin on this 100%. And this is again, this guy, this gets back to alderman and prerogative. I think our local alderman should have a significant say, far more than some unseen bureaucrat in city hall. But that doesn't mean just because the local alderman fits for it, I have to give my vote for it. If I think there's some overriding issue that's more important. So Irvin, I think he was alluding to the police and fire academy when he made that comment. He didn't specify.
That was my question. That's, that's what I, the only thing I could think of when he talked about, you know, fighting for jobs and.
Emma Mitz's ward. Yeah, he was kind of mixing metaphors a little bit there, which was an interesting thing. He was, so he was trying to play the race car to make it seem like it's only black aldermen who don't have prerogative. And I'd just like to point out, I'll say this again, it's white aldermen, Hispanic aldermen, black aldermen, Asian American aldermen, it doesn't matter what your ethnicity is. If the mayor of the city of Chicago wants something that you don't want, they're going to shove it down your throat. I've seen it happen with Brendan Riley, who's a white man in a white ward. It happened with, when Mayor Daley tried to force the children's museum into his ward. And also I was talking about that presence Tiff deal and that went down in the loop. Presence, there was opposition to giving Tiff dollars to presence because of their stance on abortion. Brendan Riley was against giving them the money. Mayor Rahm wanted to give them the money. Guess who won? Mayor Rahm. So I do not believe it's a racial matter when it comes to the mayor forcing his will upon the city council. So Jason Irvin was a kind of mixing his metaphors. He, I think he was talking about, again, he didn't specify the, 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 there was a street designation, either street designation or statue to Fred Hampton that was proposed in the second ward. And I believe this was years ago. I remember writing about this. I think the alderman, it was before Fearetti, I want to say, Madeline Hathcock was the, I can't believe the stuff I know the. And so yes, that was a case where the, the fraternal order police was given more authority, you know, than the, than the local alderman who wanted the, the tribute to Fred Hampton. And in terms of Emma Mitz, however, she wanted police and fire academy for her ward, she was opposed by lefties. Remember that? So he was like.
A significant portion of the black populace.
Yeah, like a chance the rapper came down and advocated against it. He left that part out of the equation. He made it seem like the, he made it seem like it was a bunch of white people opposing poor Emma Mitz. Come on, Jason. Better than that. But I'm with, I would have, having said all that, I would have been voting with Jason Irvin and JT. It's an absolute disgrace how we've trotted out these licenses and ignored black people who took the hardest hit in the war on drugs. Anybody spend any time in a courthouse, 10, 20, the last 30 years, you'll see black people getting arrested for possession of reefer, stuff that white people do every day, no, no consequence. So they should have had that settled. Dave Glowetz, this is me talking on my soapbox. They should have had that, those licenses ready to go out to black franchises from the get-go. So I'm with, I would have voted, I would have been with JT and Jason Irvin in this one, voting no. Hold off on this dispensary until they take care of black franchisers. But.
We didn't, we didn't hear it, but in, in this debate, ninth ward alderman Anthony Beal from the far south side said, you know, I, I said to you folks a long time ago, we should never have allowed, and just like you say, Ben, we should never have allowed any licenses in Chicago until this equity issue was solved. And so Beal had his like, I told you so moment. But look, look to see who's making the money now, all these white owners of dispensers.
Well, you know, I guess every now and then Anthony Beal and I will see eye to eye on something. Anthony Beal, longtime loyalist to mayors like Daley and Rahm, and we have not always seen eye to eye, to put it mildly. But he's, I agree with him 100% on this one. So Anthony Beal, well put.
And it passed less closely than I would have thought it was. It was passed 31 to 19, that rezoning. So Gardner got his.
I have to look at those votes. I did not take a look at those to see who the 19 were that voted no. Do you have the list in front of you?
I do.
And I, and I did not look.
I can read you the no votes if you like.
Yes.
Lispada, one Lispada, four King, five Hairston, six Sawyer, seven Mitchell, that's a surprising one. 16 Coleman, 17 Moore, 20 Taylor, 24 Scott, 25 Sixo Lopez, 28 Urban, 29 Taliya Pharoah, 33 Rodriguez Sanchez, 34 Austin, 35 Ramirez Rosa, 37 Mitz. There you go. 40 Vasquez, 47 Martin and 49 Hadden.
Yeah. So what that roll call tells you folks, and only a geek would know, is that the black aldermen, no matter how loyal they are to Mayor Lightfoot, voted with opposition on the issue that black franchisees owners had been cut out. I mean, they should have been at the front of the line. So they took that principal stand and they were joined in part by the socialists. That's Daniel Lispada is one. Carlos Ramirez Rosa vote? No.
He did.
Yeah, he's another one. And.
Beal voted yes.
Beal voted yes. Well, you know, alderman and prerogative. I told you, but alderman and prerogative. And Lopez, our good friend Ray Low voted yes, I presume.
Yes.
So alderman and prerogative is a big thing in the city of Chicago. And Mayor Lori Lightfoot campaigned on it successfully. And as I like to point out, a lot of my lefty friends misguided, allowed her to have a, like a cheap victory, like, oh, I'm standing up for something really important when I'm against alderman and prerogative. You don't hear that from a lot of lefties anymore, Dave. They've kind of quietly retreated from that stance. But so anyway, yeah, I would have been with JT and Jason Irvin on that vote. What about you? Let's watch, let's, but a little more ducking and dodging. Would you have voted no or yes, young Dave Glowetz?
Well, Ben, this next bit brings together a couple of themes you were talking about. One of this, this concern about the pine not being carved equitably and the influence on the mayor's stance. This one kind of brings that one home. Dennis, please, we're going to do drive next. This next piece comes from a report of the committee on transportation on the public way at the May 26 city council meeting. We'll hear discussion about a highly controversial ordinance that would rename the outer part of Lake Shore Drive, Jean Baptiste Point du Sabole Drive. Working on my French, don't quite have it yet. This ordinance, which is record number SO20197918, was first introduced in October of 2019. And its chief sponsor is Alderman David Moore of the South Side 17 Ward. And its chief sponsor is Alderman David Moore of the South Side 17 Ward. At the start of this piece, we'll hear from Committee Chair Howard Brookins. Let's listen.
Lastly, we have on page 21, transportation ordinance for the street renaming of Lake Shore Drive as Jean Baptiste Point du Sabo Drive.
President, I call for a roll call on this ordinance.
Your honor, there are members who wanted to speak on this matter.
I saw the hand of Alderman Hopkins raised.
Oh, I had my hand up before. I called for a roll call first.
Alderman Hopkins has had his hand up.
Oh, come on, President.
Thank you, Madam President, if I am recognized.
Alderman King, you are out of order, please.
I'm, I'm not out of order. I had my hand up before. I see the play here. I called for a roll call, just like we did before. This is just inequity playing out right here in front of us. We, we honor.
Madam President, if I am so recognized, I would join my colleague from Ward 30 in submitting a request to defer and publish the ordinance 7918 as amended and contained in the report from the Committee on Transportation.
The matter will be deferred and published.
Wow.
Chairman Brookins.
I got my hand up.
Use your hand raise on the item that's been deferred and published. There's nothing to speak on since it's been deferred and published. Chairman Brookins.
Can we get a legal opinion on this?
The roll call was called first.
The roll call was called first. Can we get a legal opinion here?
Your honor, your honor, that concludes, that concludes my report.
Alderman Moore? You're out of order, sir. Thank you, sir.
Can we get a legal opinion here, President?
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is the agreed calendar. Chairman Harris.
So what we heard there was Fourth Ward Alderman Sophia King tried to move for roll call vote right away, but Mayor Lori Lightfoot instead recognized Second Ward Alderman Brian Hopkins, who moved with evidently 30th Ward Alderman Ariel Robois to defer and publish, as we talked about earlier, deferring and publishing, delaying consideration to the next meeting. Alderman King obviously was not happy. Also not happy, we could hear in the background, Alderman Moore say he was going to start moving to defer and publish everything. And we'll see in a minute how he did that.
Yeah. Let's, I thank you so much. I was raising my hands in triumph, Dave. Excellent job, as you always do. This is a contrast to the earlier defer and publish. Welcome to the city of Chicago, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome. You know what? I, I just, I guess have to say, I love the Chicago City Council. It's just, there's just something, it's like its own little world. And I know it perpetuates all kinds of horrible things, bad deals, racism, bigotry, unfairness, inequities, powerful mayors. But it's just like its own little universe that's as bad as it is, is somehow or other, in my humble opinion, less onerous than Donald Trump and MAGA. So it's like, ah, my beloved Chicago City Council, I turn to you for energy. But that was just a blatant power play by Lori Lightfoot. Remember the first one? The first vote where they, what was it? Was it, was it the Cardinals and the, the housing that was going to go next to the asphalt plant? And somebody wanted to defer and publish? And they're like, no, we were in the middle of a roll call. Wasn't that the one? Isn't that the one?
Yeah, where Riley intervened and said, no, you can't do defer and publish.
Technically, you can't do it. So here we are coming around. What goes around, comes around, except Mayor Lori Lightfoot, she does not want Lake Shore Drive, Outer Drive renamed for Du Sabo. They get their whole reasons for it. All right. She does not want it, but she knows if there's a vote, David Moore has the votes to pass it. So what they have to do is defer and publish it to a future meeting, which gives her time to like, try to.
Pick them off.
Yeah, pick off. Yes, exactly. Pick them off. And then so she can win the vote and the resolution to change the name of Outer Drive will lose. So Sophia King, who supports the Alderman from the Fourth Ward, who supports David Moore in this initiative, had her hand up first. But you know how Lori Lightfoot couldn't tell the difference between Andre Vasquez and same thing? She looked, she couldn't tell the difference between whose hand was up first. I'm going to pick on Brian Hopkins. I was first, sorry.
Here's another interesting aspect of this, the fact that we are still in, we're in this hybrid meeting mode, hybrid of in-person and online. So it's easier for this kind of maneuver, if it was in fact not legit, for this kind of maneuver to happen, I submit to you, when the mayor is looking at the online presences of the Aldermen and can say, oh, I saw his hand up before yours because he's not in the room. Right? If everybody was in the room, that would be harder to get away with.
Yeah. No, I, yeah, that, that, yes, she has, what's that called plausible deniability?
Yeah.
Plausible deniability is that phrase that they concocted for Ronald Reagan. So like the Ronald Reagan administration was secretly plotting to trade arms to Iran in the middle of a boycott for money, which they would get, use for the Nicaraguan Contras.
Well, no one told me.
No one told, I didn't know about it, you know? Make sure Reagan's out of the room and we discuss it so we can have plausible deniability. So the mayor's like, I, I was looking at the screen. I didn't see, I don't know. What a joke, ladies and gentlemen. But we'll see this one. This is, Dave Moore was on this show a couple of weeks ago, Alderman David Moore, he's running for Secretary of State. And he gave his, his reasons for wanting to change the name. And he laid out all the tricks that the city has thrown in his way, all the obstacles that they put in his way to deny him changing that name. And they're still throwing tricks his way. Yeah. Yeah. So right now, he has the votes. He was confident he had the votes and it's, I think the fact that Lori Lightfoot did that defer and publish with Hopkins, just by the way, that is so rich. Brian Hopkins, Alderman of the Second Ward, who of course was the quarterback for the Lincoln Yards Tiff, biggest waste of money in the city of Chicago in this century, I would say. Yes, I said it, in this century, biggest waste of money in the city of Chicago. And now he's playing all kinds of tricks. I tell you what, he's Alderman, man. And yet they're better than Trump. I'll say it again, better than Trump. So David Moore perseveres. Here's another thing. Dave Glowatz, this is just who I am as a human being. If David Moore, guys, has the votes to change the street to honor a black man, I'm going to be with David Moore. You know, David Moore, I'm going to be with you. Okay? I'm going to stand with you. I'll be the last guy voting with David Moore. Be me and David Moore. And everybody else will be voting with the. Mayor is willing to spend so much money honoring Du Sabo because she doesn't want to rename the street. Like people could still call it the Outer Drive. I still call Sears Tower Sears Tower. I don't even know what Sears Tower is called. I call the Chicago Stadium, Chicago Stadium. You call whatever you want.
Isn't the Sears Tower named after noted Chicago artist and musician Wesley Willis?
Is there a musician named Wesley Willis?
He's no longer, he's deceased, but yeah.
I did not know that.
I'll tell you more about him some other time. But first let's talk about how David Moore went to exact his retribution.
Wait, hold on, before we do that, I'm going to throw this question at you. Let's see if he ducks and dodges this one, Dee. All right, Dave, what do you call the baseball park where the White Sox play?
Well, it's not Comiskey because they tore that down. So I call it Sox Park, just like the mayor does.
That's good. That's a good answer. I call it Sox Park and sometimes I call it Comiskey Park, but I do not call it flat right field or whatever the hell guaranteed right field or cell. What do you call the, the arena where my beloved Chicago Bulls play?
That's the United Center.
Yes, but what do you call it?
I think I call it the United Center.
Chicago Stadium.
They tore that down.
I still call the basketball arena the Chicago. My point being, it's a free country. You can call it whatever you want. I remember when the reader started changing, I would put Chicago Stadium in and the reader, some editor's reader, Ben, it's not Chicago Stadium anymore. It's the United Center.
Well, you want to know my pet peeve for the reader? They don't capitalize South Side, North Side and West Side.
Yes, that is true. And they, and they taught me over time, they broke me down. They broke down my resistance. I used to, I used to put capitalized South Side and they would, they would, there was some proofreader named Shelley who was obsessive with this and he would lowercase it all. So they broke my resistance, just like they broke my resistance to United Center. It's called Chicago Stadium. They broke my resistance. I'm like us, a horse, a wild horse, and they got the saddle on me.
They can't drag you away.
No. Oh, very good.
I listened to that show. All right, so let's go on. Dennis, please, we're going to do rules next. Let's go on to what I called Alderman, the revenge of Moore. At the end, at the end of most full city council meetings, what happens is it is a clerk's reading of Aldermanic introductions of proposed ordinances and resolutions. For each one of these, the clerk names the proposal and the appropriate city council committee to which the clerk office assigns the proposal, zoning, housing, et cetera. However, at that point, any Alderman can then name a different committee to which they want it assigned. And if that happens, it gets assigned to the Rules Committee. And as we've talked about before, Ben, this is often a delaying tactic because if the Rules Committee Chair, Alderman Michelle Harris, wants to keep a proposal parked in that committee, she actually has that power. So here we are at the May City Council Meeting. Clerk staffer was reading dozens of these. And here's where Alderman Moore made good on his previous threat to block stuff. Let's listen.
Alderman Osterman has a proposed order for the issuance of a permit for signs and sign boards at 6250 North Sheridan Road, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks and Building Standards. Two committees called, the matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Osterman also has a proposed ordinance for the transfer of funds within the City Council Committee on Housing and Real Estate for year 2021, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Two committees called, the matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Martin has a proposed ordinance for amendment of Minnesota Code regarding use standards for outdoor walk-up service windows, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks and Building Standards. Two committees called, the matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules.
We can hear Moore shouting in the background. So you know, it goes on like that.
Wait, now, is Moore in the city council chambers or is he?
Yes. Yeah. So the, the clerk was reading, like I say, dozens of these, and I counted 17 proposals that got sent to rules due to two committees being called. I'm not, I'm not clear. I didn't actually take a look at which ones didn't get that treatment, but I'm guessing, if I had to guess, that Moore was picking and choosing allies on that one. And so that's what he's doing. He's kind of breaking stuff.
And who, who, you have to have two Aldermen. So who joined him in that, you know?
Well, that's to defer and publish.
Oh, I see, just to shift to rules.
Yeah, yeah, just to shift it to rules. Somebody has to take issue with the, the committee assignment that the clerk has declared.
Dave Glowatz, parliamentarian, very good for knowing that. David, they would be the guy whispering to mayor's ear. Good for you, David Moore. Good for you.
So that just provides another procedural thing that, you know, to get these unparked out of Rules Committee, Alderman Smith, yeah, Alderman Michelle Harris, I'm sorry, has to schedule a hearing and get them out of the committee and then get them assigned to the next committee. So it's like, it's a delaying tactic.
It's a delaying tactic. It's his way of letting them know that he doesn't appreciate what they did to him. And what goes around, comes around. I remember, oh my gosh, I remember, I've talked about this before, when it was Nick Sposato. And he did a defer, or he shifted, I can't, I don't think it was a deferred publisher or it could have been a shift to a Rules Committee. I can't remember what it was, but it had to do with Tiff D on the South Loop and Pat Dowell was really upset with him for doing that, came up to him and got him to back off. I remember that, I wrote about that for the reader. And you know, the, the thing is, it's kind of like, in a similar theme to what I was raising at the, at the start of the show, when I was talking about Donald Trump wearing his pants backward and all the mainstream media coming to his defense and asserting, well, they've done an independent investigation and they determined that his pants were in fact on the correctly. So let's not continue to perpetuate this falsehood, which I had a laugh. Donald Trump, who got to where he was in politics by just blatantly making stuff up and continuing to repeat it in the face of evidence. Think of saying that Barack Obama was born in Kenya, is not a US citizen, therefore not qualified, or was not born in this country, is therefore not qualified to be president, eligible to be president. So Donald, they're doing to Donald Trump. Okay, you know, they're, suddenly he believes in the media. Well, this is very similar. Mayors have been using all kinds of underhanded parliamentary tactics to stifle people, Aldermen that they disagreed with for years and years. And so now David Moore says, how about that? You play that game? I'll play that game. So I don't know, it's kind of, to quote Dave Glowatz, what goes around, comes around. And I appreciate it. Yes, you did. I listened very carefully, I took notes.
All right, we got one more bit here. Dennis, please, we're going to do Mel next. I guess I, I should have named that differently, not to tip it off.
Oh, thank you for.
So toward the end of the meeting, Alderman Robois asked for suspension of the council's rules to highlight a tribute to a longtime city worker. And this tribute featured a guest speaker, video, via video conference. And the guest spoke for five and a half minutes, but we're going to hear only pieces of that. Let's listen.
The chair recognizes Alderman Raboyos.
I'd like the clerk to read maybe half of that resolution that was by Alderman Sawyer regarding a 51-year employee, Justin Malave, who worked very closely with, and I think we can get Alderman Mel, Richard Mel, to speak on the matter before I do.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm here to talk about a friend, a wonderful individual. Give you a little background if I can. 1960, when I was in the university, John F. Kennedy came and spoke. In 1962, Paul Douglas was running for election in 68 and I was passing out information to the neighborhood. In 1972, I was involved in the Logan Square Neighborhood Association and I decided to run for Democratic Ward Commitment. I lost, but not by much. I lost by 500 votes.
Oh.
I ran for Alderman in 1975. Then I ran for commitment in the year after that and won. I'd like to tell you one story, if I could, real quickly. He brought a woman in with a seven-year-old daughter, her father and a little son who was terribly disinformed, could not speak. She asked if there was any way that I possibly could help her get a Section 8 housing. In those days, we were able to help people. Today, if we tried to do something like that, somebody would probably be on the front page of a paper. The father, who was a cabinetmaker, came back six weeks later, and I don't know if you can see it over the, over the thing, I'll try to show it to you, that this little train set right there. He, they came back to thank me.
Thank you, Alderman Mel. Thank you for, for your kind words. I am especially grateful to Alderman Chairman Sawyer, who brought this resolution to fruition. Thank you for doing that, Alderman Sawyer. Madam President, members of City Council, aye to.
Ladies and gentlemen, please be respectful of your colleagues.
Oh my goodness. Dave, do you have anything to say before I go on my Mel-like filibuster? That was rich. I don't know why, at the end, Lori Lightfoot was saying, be respectful to your colleagues. Do you know what was happening for her to say that?
I believe that while Mel was talking, no one was, there were many people not paying attention. So since there are like, you know, 40 people in the chamber, they're just, you know, they're, you know, they're cavorting around their, their schmoozing. And when, you know, when he stopped talking and finally Robois is talking again, she's, okay, now we're.
Yeah, it's okay not to pay attention to Mel, but Raboyos, folks, Alderman Richard Mel, just for you youngsters out there, was the Alderman of the 33rd Ward from, I want to say, 1975 to he, I would say, like 2013 or so. He, he stepped down in the middle of his term and handed, handed the reins off to his daughter, Deborah Mel.
Who was in the General Assembly at the time.
Yeah, she was in the General Assembly and she, I guess she wanted to be the Alderman, who knows? He handed it off to her.
Tired of going to Springfield.
Yeah. And so what a joke. Then she was defeated by Rosanna Rodriguez Sanchez last time around 2019, heated race. And, but Richard Mel, I, the headline in the reader about Richard Mel and me was we're the headline in the reader about Richard Mel and me was we're frenemies. And Richard Mel and I were pretty much on the opposite side of every political issue from the moment I came to Chicago in 1981 to the moment he left the city council. And for a long time, he wouldn't talk to me because he just, just flat out didn't like me. And when his, he told Blagojevich, don't talk to this guy. He's a commie and hippie, you know, reader guy. And I think he mixed me up with Gary Rivlin, another reader writer who did this infamous article about Mel, where Mel was openly talking about how they were sabotaging Harold Washington on the grounds that if people got disgusted with the way, the lack of services in the city of Chicago, they would revolt against Harold Washington. And so you could argue that the discomfort and the dysfunction of a couple of years of interrupted service, city services would be paid off for by getting rid of Harold Washington. That was the argument that he made on the record to Gary Rivlin. And he never really got over it. Always disdain the reader. And I guess I got washed up with Rivlin on that one. So.
That's what happens when you go on the record.
Yeah. And then I think Rivlin was taping him. So he's like, I never said that. Oh yeah. Well, here's the tape. Okay. And it's, by the way, anybody who knows Mel, that's exactly the kind of thing Mel would say. So he, he, there are so many infamous Richard Mel moments at the Chicago City Council. He was such a bully and a braggart. The one where he got on the table, the failure during the, the two, the 1987 council debate after Harold Washington died, where Mel was part of the, the group of Aldermen that wanted Eugene Sawyer's mayor, he got on the table to try to get David Moore to recognize him. The, the infamous statement by Mel, when they were passing the parking meter deal or selling an asset worth a billion dollars, excuse me, and selling an asset worth $10 billion for $1 billion, somehow or other they thought a good idea where Mel said, ah, shut up and vote for it. Nobody reads this stuff anyway. I mean, he could go on and on with Richard Mel.
But none of that history was in Mel's own history that we heard there.
No, that part, that was a filibuster. Mel going, what a great guy I am. And then when he says that thing, like, I want to help somebody. Nowadays, you help somebody, it's on the front page of the paper. What would be on the front page of the paper? Hello? It's when you're taking an illegal bribe. Okay. If you help someone get into section eight, I don't think everybody's going to freak out about it. You know?
It's when he pulled out the pictures of the train set. That's when the mayor had.
So she cut him off. Mel didn't have the power, did it? Mel, Mel has the gift for gab. We brought him to the hideout once, I think the first show. And on the stage for first two is Scott Waggsback. Good. What, what a collection of characters. Richard Mel and Proko Joe Moreno. And a bunch of lefties walked out when Mel started talking because he just kept going and I did it this way. He loved it. Huh, these lefties. So anyway, Richard Mel is quite the character and they just, you know, they essentially did to Mel what mayors do to their outspoken independent critics. They turned, essentially turned his microphone off. Poor Mel. Wait, in 1984.
And he can blame Alderman Rabois because apparently it was Rabois who shepherded, shepherded him into that meeting.
Yeah. So he could blame Rabois for setting him up, but it was just like, oh my God, there's Richard Mel coming out of nowhere. And.
Another advantage of the, of the video conference age is that he could just parachute in there on the screen.
Well, I, so he was by the screen. I remember years ago, a city council meeting, Robert Shaw showed up, the former Alderman of the ninth ward, his brother, who had passed away was being honored. And it was, I remember all the Aldermen getting up, including Mel. Mel was in the city council then to pay the respects to Robert Shaw and the Shaw Brothers and telling anecdotes about how nobody could tell the difference between the Shaw Brothers. They were identical twins. And I remember Robert Shaw was really moved by it and the tears were flowing. So, I mean, I, I believe if you're going to get honored, you gotta show up. Okay. So Mel, wow.
But then he couldn't show the pictures of the train set.
Yeah. We're frenemies. We're frenemies to the, there was a picture that the reader ran. Mel invited me to a zoning meeting of his, it's classic to talk about tiffs, which is pretty funny. And afterwards we shook hands. They took, somebody took a picture of it and it was in the reader. How about that, Dave? I think you actually, we had a discussion about that when we, from our old podcast.
Would not surprise me.
Yes. Anyway, that was funny stuff. And when you said Alderman Mel, I go, yes. So is that it, young Dave?
It is. And I really appreciate you guys carving out the time for me to indulge in this obsession.
Well, I, this is one of my favorite parts of the show. And so Dave, before we let you go, tell folks how they can follow your good work and they want more Dave Glowatz. Go ahead.
On your web, you can go to chigov.com, that's C-H-I-G-O-V dot com, Inside Chicago Government. If you're on Facebook, go to facebook.com/insidegov. That's G-O-V. And on Twitter, at C-H-I-G-O-V-T. And I want to give a special thanks to Dennis for shepherding, speaking of shepherds, all this audio onto our platform here. And thanks again to you, Ben.
All right. You're welcome. That's the great Dave Glowatz. And this is one of my favorite segments on the show where he takes a deep dive on the city council meeting. Every month we do it once a month. What the hell? It's my obsession. It's his obsession. So let's indulge ourselves. And you can learn something about how democracy works. And you could also have a pleasure watching Dave Duck and Dodge. Man has many opinions, but he's not going to reveal them to anybody on this show or in any imprint at all. Dave Glowatz does a great job. Thank you very much, Dave. And of course, the man, the myth, the legend, pride of joy of Alton, Illinois, without whom this show would be possible. And as Logan, Paul and Floyd Mayweather would tell you, back home in Alton, they call him Dr. Doobie. Give yourself a raise. Take it out of petty cash. See you tomorrow, everybody.